Welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, March 5, 2025. Can we establish a quorum, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Ms. Kuckner?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Swyson?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Secretary Daley?
Here.
Madam Chair, please let the record reflect that some members are present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? No, okay. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission, March 5, 2025, agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Number five, Secretary Daley, Administrative Matters.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I have just two items for administrative matters. The first is a reminder that our fifth and final master plan open house is going to be held tomorrow night. That's at the Eldersburg Branch Library. It's an open house, so anytime between 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM, people can drop in, take a look at the information we have to share, which is a lot of what you all have already been digesting over these last few months, and most importantly, a chance for folks to give us some early feedback so that we can rule that into the discussions moving forward. The other thing that I just wanted to mention to you was you should have gotten an email from Gail to fill out the annual financial disclosure statement, so please remember to do that so that we don't have to hunt you down. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, number six is the Master Plan Municipal Planning Presentation, Manchester.
As you have been hearing from a number of towns over the last few weeks, we are inviting all the towns to come in and share a little bit about what their current planning issues are, some of the things that they have in the works. And tonight, we have the town of Manchester, and I'll let you all introduce yourselves.
Hello, one.
Yes.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to come and present our overview of our plan. My name's Michelle Wilder, I am the zoning administrator for the town of Manchester, and with me, I have Henry Laskin, who is our chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Matt Leister, who is our new town administrator.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Welcome. So Manchester first adopted a comprehensive plan in 1976, and we have regularly updated, and our current plan is 2018 with our five-year review, which was done in 2023. The central vision of this plan is to maintain Manchester's small-town character and appeal and all of the plan's goals and objectives strive to achieve this vision. So population threshold is created by setting a reasonable population consistent with the current capacity of our wastewater treatment plant and other essential public services, facilities, and infrastructures. Capacity analysis is an ongoing necessity, and potential for the town to grow is limited by our water and sewer capacity. Manchester's potable water is currently derived from 13 wells. The town sewage treatment plant has a limited capacity of 500,000 gallons, and once capacity reaches 400, the town would need a plan in place for expansion. Based on the existing users and the potential future users, which account for new development currently in process, in-town properties currently on septic, and the enclaves that would connect in the future, the town is approaching maximum build-out. We're still, with being able to still provide adequate facilities to our residents. The Planning Commission has been very proactive in accounting for all these future connections. In the last 10 years, any development that has occurred within the town of Manchester, we have required the developers to place additional infrastructure if they have but septic properties. And these are for future connections should their septics fail, and these septic properties are considered in our current capacity analysis. The town does not envision increasing sewage capacity to encourage growth, so therefore, the 2028 plan will be retracting our municipal growth area to reflect the available water and sewer capacities. Our business, our Main Street Business District, the plan is encouraging redevelopment of Main Street because the primary business hub in town is in an effort to attract more business to town. The town underwent a Main Street revitalization in 2002, 2002, which replaced our sidewalks, infrastructure, and provided new landscaping, and at this time, more revitalization revitalization is needed once again. Business activity on Main Street, particularly within the town core, is somewhat hindered by traffic issues. The Route 30 bypass is not likely to occur, which means that Maryland 30, a major commuter road to southern Pennsylvania, will continue to direct traffic through the center of town. Public parking is limited in town, and the ability to park during peak traffic times is difficult. These traffic issues discourage people from parking and visiting our merchants during their trips home from work, which in turn makes it challenging to attract any small retail businesses. We're looking at ways to make Main Street more business-friendly by creating additional parking, as well as trying to improve pedestrian access along the arterial roads connecting to Main Street. We have multiple residential zoning categories, and in planned conjunction with the zoning code encourages various residential types, from low to very high density, single-family, to some previously existing multifamily or apartments in existing buildings on Main Street. This mix of housing types allows people of various income levels the opportunity to make Manchester their home. The plan where possible promotes the protection of wetlands, waterways, through such measures as forested buffers, conservation zoning to minimize impacts to these resources because of surface water contamination. Establishing sensitive areas will protect municipal wells, aquifers, streams, wetlands, flood zones, and wildlife habitat. The plan also promotes stormwater management collection areas to capture and clean stormwater before it enters streams and groundwater systems, and we are currently working with the county on the Manchester East Stormwater Management Facility. Our parks, we're blessed to have the largest amount of parkland and open space of any municipality in the county. We have approximately 130-plus acres, which consists of Christmas Tree Park, which is pavilions, playground equipment, which includes an inclusive playground, tennis courts, football fields, baseball fields with lights, which were provided by Open Space and Community Parks and Programs. This consists of about 40 acres. And we have Pine Valley Park, which is the home to our Charlotte's Quest Nature Center and Memory Grove. It has approximately 90 acres, and these areas are heavily used by town residents and provide both passive and recreational uses. It's also used by our schools for educational purposes. The incorporation of these open spaces within town further lends to the small-town character. To continue the increase of open space, changes were made to our R40 zoning that required development to occur in this district. Anything annexed after 2021 would be required to cluster and provide maximum open space. These are our major developments going on at this time, and we have Equine Meadows, which was an infill development, it's consisting of 30 lots, and that's in the process of being reviewed. Patriots Overlook, which was recently annexed into town. It's a residential development consisting of 36 lots. Patapsco 91 LLC was an enclave that was annexed to that consisting of 14 lots. We have Maverick Solar, which is just now starting, and that is on approximately 10 acres in-town limits. We're working on a PFAS treatment project with the RFP, it has been sent out for design. Our wastewater treatment plant is going through an E and R upgrade with a 60% design so far completed, and we are to be receiving 90% within the next two weeks. And construction probably will be slated for 2026, 27, so this is a major cost to our town of Manchester. So in closing, our opportunities that we have had with the county, currently, the county reviews all of our site plan developments such as grading, stormwater management, water resources, forest conservation, and we have appreciated their efforts greatly since we are a small staff and we cannot do this ourselves. They have helped us with improvements to stormwater. We worked together on a stormwater management retrofit in the Whispering Valley development, and now, as mentioned before, the process of this new Manchester East Stormwater. So I guess our greatest concern is the traffic and the ability to attract businesses. So it only gets worse as we have more and more large numbers of residential development occurring to the north, and any collaboration with the county to alleviate some of the traffic backup along our main streets will be greatly appreciated. And although outside of the jurisdiction, if we could get any assistance the county could provide us in informing us on the status of these developments and these subdivisions and any potential impact. At this time, we've heard rumored 700, 800 units up there that will be coming through town to go to wherever they are. So thanks again for allowing us to present this to you and discuss our plan, and if you have any questions.
Gentlemen.
That Maverick Community Solar, that's not part of the, and Daphne, maybe for you, that's not part of the eight solar projects for the county, is it? That's separate, that's their own thing?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Would you explain a little bit more? You said you were retracting your plan.
No, it will be retracting the municipal growth.
Oh, the middle area.
Of the plan.
Growth area.
Because as we've done our capacity analysis, we realize we cannot accommodate that much septic. And we're trying to reserve some septic for the people, I mean, the sewer for the people who are on septic. So trying to be proactive.
So you're, you have any capacity for infill?
Yes, that's all in our analysis, and we are reserving.
And the population of Manchester is what?
Fifty-four, 5,500.
5,500.
Mm-hmm. There's about 4,200 of those on our sewer.
Okay.
Patapsco 91, is that the, that plot of land that's in Manchester?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we refer to it as the Cook property, but now it's the Patapsco 91. Yeah.
So as part of your plan, you mentioned traffic and parking and all that. Are you, what, what kind of traffic, a little uncontrollable, but parking, what, what kind of?
We have some, what am I trying to say, public parking lots that are town-owned, but the traffic is just unbelievable that you can't even pull in, pull out as, as during rush hour times. I know that in the past, we had previously talked to the county and were working to try to do something at the Route 27 and 30 intersection to get a turn lane to go south on 27 so that cars could move a little faster, and that kind of fell through because of all the utilities that were in 27 and the cost of moving them to create those lanes. So at this point, we're kind of stagnant.
Yeah.
Not really anything to do.
I live in Manchester, I know on some days, usually traditionally with the traffic going north is backed up to CJ Miller, but once every couple of weeks, it'll be literally backed up into the circle.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and I don't live that far north, but, you know.
I think the circle got it all because you're taking all of Main Street in Hampstead and all the bypasses in Hampstead, and you bring them to our little one single lane. But in the mornings coming in, coming south, it's backed up way beyond Hallyhill development.
And as Michelle said, southern Pennsylvania has two or three very large subdivisions proposed between Hanover and the Maryland state line, and inevitably, the vast majority of those people are going to be coming south to go to work. So the situation in Manchester is just going to get much more difficult, and trying to get retail and merchants on Main Street is just going to be harder and harder because people just won't stop, they're sitting in that traffic, they just want to get home. So we're just, you know, we appreciate all of Andrew, Andrew's efforts from, from planning staff to keep us informed on what's going on in Pennsylvania. He's trying to let us know what's going on so that we can at least maybe make some sort of comment to him and just say, hey, think about us when you're doing traffic analysis up there.
Do the other municipalities, I'm thinking about Westminster in particular, I mean, parking on Main Street and all that, do they use, utilize any services of consultants? I hate to use that word, or, or, you know, outside services to offer plan suggestions on how to improve parking and things like that?
I'm not aware of any that are being used right now, but that's something we can, we can explore if there are.
I'm just thinking, you know, because you guys are asking for some help, and I'm just wondering if there's some other municipalities, and we hear from Mount Airy, I guess, next week?
Yep.
Might have the same issue, but just to share information to, you know, help guide through this or at least research and take a look.
Yeah, our situation's a little unique because we really are the one municipality that has a main commuter road.
Right.
Running right through the heart of town. Everybody else is kind of, their main street is somewhat segregated from the main, the main highway, we're not.
Right.
So it presents challenges, and we have a nice town, and we're just trying to figure out ways to improve the quality of life for the people on Main Street and have a vibrant business district.
Right.
So.
It, it's funny, I know, because I live in Manchester and a lot of people I know live in Hanover, and there it's like, what you guys need to do, it's like, we don't need to do nothing, you guys are the one that are making it this way. It's not us, it's you guys. You know?
Exactly.
It's like, go tell your congresspeople that maybe they should help widen the road, I don't know.
Right, that conversation would get cured real quick if you put a toll booth up there at the state.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that, but I don't think we as a town can put a toll booth on a state highway, so I guess we're stuck.
I say too many things I shouldn't, so, yeah.
I'll be standing right there collecting them, so.
I'm with you.
A Manchester EZ Pass.
But again, we do appreciate all, all the help we get from the county on processing development plans and Andrew keeping us up to date at our, our monthly meetings on what, what's going on at the county.
So isn't 30 and 27, they're state highways?
Yes, they're both state highways.
So is the state doing anything, Andrew, do you know?
Right now.
It's not part of the capital.
Madam Chair, not, not that I know of right now.
Okay.
Hold on, you didn't give your, your name and your address. Tough crowd tonight.
Do I need to give my speech about, oh, listen?
Yeah, three minutes.
Just for him, yes.
So maybe, because when Mary and her staff do the road capital plans, we need to put this in a tickler for next year or whenever that comes around, comes around pretty quick, to look at Manchester and 27 and 30, that's, yeah. That, hell, almost backs all the way up to Lineboro, you know, sometimes, so, yeah. I used to take the shortcut up to York, up 27 over 30 and then Lineboro Road, and coming home in the evening, ooh, it's nasty.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Again, we thank you for your time, much appreciated.
One more question if you don't mind. If you could upgrade your traffic problem, what, what would be the, what would be the magic solution to not have parking on Main Street or bypass? I mean, what?
Well, I mean, obviously.
What is your wish list?
I mean, obviously, the bypass would, would alleviate a lot of the traffic problem, but realistically, we don't see that happening anytime in the foreseeable future. So we're, we're, we're not really sure what we can do at this point. I mean, land, land available for public parking in town is, is almost non-existent, you know, so we're, we're looking for answers, but right now, we don't have any.
I think the only thing that we talked about was for helping them go north, I mean, go south because they could turn right on 27, that's where a lot of the traffic is going. Right now, we have a, at that turn, the lane holds about three cars.
Yeah.
That's it. And that just holds up everybody that wants to go right, so.
And as you pointed out, that will back traffic up to Lineboro Road in the morning, so.
And the, when we say, and that, that this doesn't, we don't see a bypass happening in our lifetimes, is it because of budgetary constraints at the state, the county? Is it because we've done agricultural, we've hemmed you in from, from agricultural easements and we can't even put the bypass in?
Well, I think.
What is contributing to that?
I think it's primarily funding at this point. I think environmental concerns also are an issue because you've got bog turtle, northeast Carroll County is the highest concentration of federally threatened bog turtles in the United States, and Manchester, Miller's Algea Road area has probably the highest concentration in the country. So trying to build a road through there would be difficult environmentally, but also just right now, financially, it's just not something they're looking at doing. So that, that's a problem. And then, if I'm correct, the, the one auto store that was built there in Greenmount was actually put in where the alignment for that Manchester bypass was supposed to start.
The one in Hampstead there by the Weiss?
By the Weiss Market, that was built within the alignment, so.
So even if you, even if you were successful in just getting the bypass from north of town, you know, to the, it's almost like the right turn, the right turn bypass, right? That you desire to get onto 27, just that leg, would that not offer a?
It would offer some relief. Honestly, the bypass alignment that was shown on the plans traveling east of town, in my opinion, never made sense.
Okay.
Because you're not intercepting any of the 27 traffic with the bypass, you're going east of it. If the bypass had run west of town, then traffic coming from Westminster towards Manchester that was heading either to Pennsylvania or south would intercept the bypass before they got into town. So that was the more logical alignment, I never understood why they went east, that made no sense to me. Plus, the bog turtle issues are much less of an encumbrance west of town. My real job is an environmental consultant, so.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I, I do know those issues, so bog turtles are not really an issue west of town in the deep-run watershed as much as they are to, to the east of town into the upper gunpowder.
That makes sense, when they redid the bridge at the bottom of Cape Horn, it took forever, but apparently there was, they didn't think they were there, but they found a nest of those turtles, and then it took, like, it just sat for a year, I guess, while they were relocating or doing something.
They were required to do a detailed study, they actually went in and trapped them to determine population thresholds, so. And we've, I, I know on Algea Road, there are two bog turtle sites right there, so.
If you solved your parking problem and your traffic problem, Nirvana here, right? Get, get all your wishes that Ralph allows. What's your capacity to increase commercial on Main Street, commercial business?
Well, all of our Main Street has commercial zoning to it, but they, like we said, people just don't, they don't make it. We've had people come and go quickly.
That's what happens, we get, we get a business in, a year later, nine months later, they close.
The only thing that stays is our Spargos in Dutch Corner. That's really it.
Yeah, and Dutch Corner doesn't serve dinner. There are breakfast and lunch facilities, so they try to, they don't deal with the F. There are breakfast and lunch facilities, so they try to, they don't deal with the afternoon rush hour, so.
It is a challenge, hopefully, something will change and maybe the bog turtles will go away.
Right, right.
Well, hopefully, because we do have a nice town, we have a very nice town.
Add a lot to the economy.
Yeah.
Bog turtle.
Like, it adds a lot to the table.
You know everybody can hear us, right?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, number seven, master plan work group overview and discussion.
Alrighty, I'm going to have three of the conference of planning staff come to the table here. Andrew Gray, Tiffany Fawcett, and Claire Stewart are all planners on our staff who will be the primary facilitators for the three work groups that we're forming. So, our purpose tonight is to give you a little bit of an overview of the topics that we'd like to cover with all of the work groups and some, thank you, affiliation buckets, if you will, for possible participants on the work group. So, let me just pull up my presentation really quickly. Okay. So, as you recall, back in January, I believe, we passed a resolution to create several work groups to assist you in the development of the work, of the master plan. So, these work groups are allowed under your rules and procedures and the resolution specifically called out the role that they would have, and that would be to study specific topics in detail that have an influence on the master plan. And then, for that work group to provide a report back to you with their recommendations. So, it's a way of doing a deep dive into a few topics that we know are at the forefront of people's minds. Most especially, it's also a way to take the two studies that we contracted for related to housing and economic development and kind of break those down a little bit more to see which of those recommendations contained in the study would be advisable to consider including in the master plan and maybe even provide a little more detail for them. So, a little bit more specifically, some of the things that we'll be looking for the work groups to provide when they give their recommendations in this report are things that are related to land use, to regulations, to policies, and to capital or financial recommendations. And the reason why we want to try to hone in on those is because those are things that are actionable items, they'll be the kind of recommendations that we can put some, put a work plan behind in order to actually implement, rather than some sort of vague broad statements that we don't have any good direction for in terms of how to achieve them or how to implement them. So, that's how we want to try to tailor the work of the work groups so that it fits your needs and the purpose stated for the work group creation. The composition is, we're looking at trying to create a mix of folks on each of the work groups that would include experts in the field of either housing, agriculture, or economic development, as well as folks who have other stakes in those areas, maybe they work for a particular nonprofit or a particular business related to one of those three areas, as well as general citizenry. So, we really want to make sure that because the plan is a reflection of the entire community, that the general citizenry has a strong voice in it and has several seats at the table in the work group discussions. We are particularly trying to recruit people from both Freedom and Finksburg, since those are the counties' two unincorporated designated growth areas, so we want to make sure that we have folks from those areas on each of these work groups. And then, lastly, as we've talked about at a previous meeting, we'll have two of the planning commission members serving as ex officios on each of the work groups. So, because that work group will be providing recommendations back to you, you're definitely welcome to participate in the discussions and listen in on what folks are saying, but we would suggest that when it comes to trying to achieve consensus and that sort of thing, that we kind of take a step back and let the remaining members of the work group reach that, since the report will be coming back to you. A few things that we've taken in terms of an overall approach to all three work groups that I'll mention, and then we'll let Andrew and Tiffany and Claire go through those individually. But there are some commonalities, so first of all, we want to try to make sure that we're giving folks materials ahead of time, we want to really make sure that we're using everyone's time efficiently and that the meeting time is productive and not spent doing things that folks could do prior to the meeting. So, we'll make sure that we provide materials ahead of time and throughout the duration of the meetings. These will all be open meetings, so what that means is that we will post the notification that the meeting is happening and when and where it's happening, and people from the general public are welcome to come and listen in. They're not participants as part of the work group, but they are able to listen to the, listen to the discussions and will provide, we'll need to select a chair for each work group, and we will also provide meeting summaries, so anybody who wants to kind of track with the discussions is able to do that. Beyond those kind of logistical sorts of things, most of the agendas will follow a little bit of a similar pattern in the sense of reviewing baseline information from any studies that we have or other data reports, so getting kind of a lay of the land initially. Also, allowing the work group participants to identify what they think are the, kind of the game changers in terms of these three areas, ag, housing, and economic development, that they want to try to make sure are incorporated into the recommendations. The bulk of the discussions will be related to discussion and analysis of opportunities and constraints that are related to any needs or trends that have been identified. We'll have a midpoint joint meeting between all three. We want to make sure that one work group isn't going off in a direction that is completely in a bubble and independent from what the other work groups are talking about, because there will definitely be some overlap. So, sort of a midpoint opportunity for people to hear what the other work groups are talking about and maybe find some areas that they could bring into their own discussion for And then, lastly, formulation of recommendations that will be included in a report to you addressing those four areas that I mentioned before, land use, regulations, policies, and financial or capital investments. Any questions on kind of the big picture overview of the work groups before we get into each one individually? Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Claire Stewart, who's going to describe the ag work group.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be the facilitator for the ag work group, so I'm just going to quickly go over the purpose and then our topics that we're going to be discussing throughout. So, the purpose is to review and analyze studies, reports, and research to identify the primary issues that influence the long-term viability of agriculture and rural communities in Carroll County. And then, the second purpose is to develop those four categories of recommendations that Daphne just went over, to the planning commission for the master plan update, which is the land regulatory and policy changes and then capital and financial recommendations. So, as far as our meeting topics, we're going to start off by discussing trends in agriculture. Some of those are going to involve types of farming, crop versus livestock, business models, so small farming versus large conventional farms, and then, three, the increasing need for secondary income. Second topic, we'll talk about our threats and opportunities to sustaining viable ag. We'll discuss ag preservation. Right now, we're about 80%, we've reached about 80% of our 100,000 acre goal, so the question is, where do we go from here and what do we want the next 10 years to look like for ag preservation in the county? And then, we will talk about Carroll's position to leverage the ag sector as an economic driver. We'll discuss ag tourism and then how we can support farm diversification. And then, the last general topic that we'll discuss is demographics and succession planning as that relates to the next generation of farmers in Carroll County. Then, we will, at that point, probably pivot to our joint meeting with housing and economic development. We'll come back and probably the last couple meetings, we'll talk about our preliminary recommendations for the planning commission, we'll look to refine those, you know, is there any, anything further we need to discuss? And then, we'll come back with a final recommendations and a report, and at that point, we'll look and see, you know, did we hit on that, what's that one game changer for ag in Carroll County? Did we touch on that? Is that reflected in our recommendations and report to the planning commission? And then, let's see, next slide, okay. So, I'm just going to quickly go over our, I guess, proposed participants for the ag work group. We have five members of Carroll County boards and commissions, so in addition to the two planning commission members, we have a member from the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, ag preservation advisory board, and then the Environmental Advisory Council. We have a couple members of county staff in addition to comp planning. We have several businesses that represent the ag industry in Carroll County. We have some additional stakeholders, the Carroll County Farm Bureau, Bureau, the Carroll Soil Conservation District, the UMP Extension, and the, some sort of a lending officer. And then, we have a number of citizen farmers based on various products or expertise in the community, and then a couple just citizens at large. And I think that total comes to 25, not 24.
Oops, sorry.
But, anyway. So, are there any questions, comments, anything you want to discuss related to the ag work group or what we have proposed?
One thing, before we dive into the discussion, that I just want to point out with all of the work groups is, we've put together some suggested topics just so that we can start to formulate agendas and the kind of information that we would need to put together. But one of the first questions that we'll pose to folks is, what have we missed? What do we need to discuss that's not already part of the, part of the topics? And these, again, both the topics and the work group affiliations are completely draft form right now and open for any suggestions that you all might have.
I, I don't know how to say it, how, what I'm thinking about it. You know, we've had a couple of uses come before us that are, they're taking place in agricultural areas, and they're certainly allowed on our, in our code. You know, putting a church up, you know, we've been doing it since we first hiked across the river and settled this county. And it seems to me that with water and sewer and all these kinds of things, I kind of wonder if we've gotten to a point where we kind of need to reevaluate some of these permitted uses that are longstanding and, you know, assisted living facilities in those areas. Again, we've got a huge need for that, I'm not debating the need, and I, you know, I'm not against at all churches. I just question whether or not we've gotten to a point where some of these permitted uses that we allowed and allow in agricultural areas, because we've matured to a point. You know, don't we want to call the question, is this, do we still want to do this? Do we still, because we, you know, it's not like, you know, we can always use another church, but we've got a ton of churches, you know, and do we, if they're going to be on septic in that area, or there's going to be a drawl of water because of the use and it's going to challenge the water table for the use that's really the primary use in that area? I just question whether or not some of these uses, we should continue to allow at the, in the way that we've allowed them. Am I saying this poorly, I'm saying this really poorly, I'm sorry, I just, I.
No, you're saying, you're saying it right.
You're trying to define a game changer.
Because when you have agriculture zoned land, I think the word agriculture gets lost in what can happen on it many, many times, and I could sit here and say 20 examples of what you're talking about.
Right.
So, should that be a part of our discussion? Yeah, it certainly should be. You know, uses on ag, when you have an ag remainder, what is an ag remainder and define it? So, if you put, you know, you're not, I don't think you're stepping on anybody's toes when you mention church or junkyard or.
Equipment storage.
Storage, equipment storage areas or.
All of that.
You know, it is what it is.
Yeah.
But, but the intent of a build out, so if you have an agricultural property and there's seven allowable lots there, and then you have an agricultural remainder, I don't think I've ever seen a church that has turned into a farm. But if you have an agricultural remainder, you still have a farm. So, that's simplistic thinking, but that's a hot button issue with me. I think it's a very important issue.
Okay, so, I, again, and I think part of my, it's interesting that we come, we're coming to it, I come to it from a different direction in that it just seems to me that there's some permitted uses that we allowed, and it was one thing when I knew you, you knew me, we, it's an easygoing county, I know, I know you're what you're going to do, you're going to do it right, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes in, they build an assisted living facility in a residential area that's four stories tall, it towers over the residential, you know, and they did it on, and it was permitted, it was a permit. it was a permitted use, you know? And so, and we, everybody says, you know, well, you should stop it. Well, you know what? It's permitted. It's not us to decide whether or not you can. It's, you know, so, again, I think, I think part of what we should be doing in this, and we've just, we've just finished an exhaustive review of our code. So for me to, for me to bring this up is like, you know, Pete, you know, that train left the station, were you not here when you, where were you?
No, no.
You know, I just, you know, when we talk about the church that was here, out, you know, and, again, I mean, the fact that they can get so many people to show up, I'm jacked up about the fact that, you know, there are people showing up to go to church. I mean, that's fantastic, when there's so many churches who are having challenges getting people just to show up. You know, at the same time, it breaks your heart when we have neighbors not being neighborly. And so, and the reason for that is, it's a use that's taking place in an area that frankly, I'm not going to say it doesn't belong, because it's permitted, right? So I've said it, but again, I mean, we've just reviewed all our code, and we've done, we did, we did a great job doing it. But I just, when you hear some of this stuff, I just kind of think, golly Moses, I really think there's still some work to be done there.
Next level.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think you're wrong. I mean, to that, to your point, I mean, we looked at solar last year. We didn't have to look at solar, we could have left that alone, and we could have been like every other county, but we're not like every other county. So I think you have a valid point, and I think we should look at it.
I'm glad you brought it up.
That's good feedback to have, so that we kind of know maybe some of the questions to ask. I would, I would hope that maybe in the discussion, when we're talking about, like, threats and opportunities, are some of these incompatible land uses posing a threat to the sustainability of agriculture into the future in Carroll? And I think that's sort of one of the things I want to keep coming back to. So as we're doing a 10-year plan, the conversation that I think would be really useful to really focus on is, what are the things that we can plan for and implement that will ensure that all of the investment we've made in ag preservation, and all of the things that we're doing to support agribusiness and our local farmers are going to mean that agriculture is a viable path for people to choose, it's a viable industry, it's something that is not going to go away in Carroll anytime soon. So talking about what some of the threats are, what some of the, some of the ways that the ag zone is eroded, and then what some of the remedies to that may be, I think is a perfect, fits perfectly in with that approach. Any other thoughts on the meeting topics, or some of the different affiliations that we've identified for reaching out to folks?
Have you had anybody reach out to you and say, I've heard this is, I mean, 25 is a lot, 24 is a lot of volunteers. We think we're going to be able to do this?
Big group.
That's a big group, yeah. I'd love to see it.
Yeah, well, I think we have 25 people that we can invite. Our hope is that we'll, you know, for sure, not everybody is going to be able to accept that invitation. So if we invite a larger number, then hopefully we'll end up somewhere in the 15 to 20 range, which I think would be a good, you know, it's a solid group. You can still have good discussion, but you're also representing a broad range of interests, so.
Wedding reception math. Invite 200, hope only 50 show up.
Doesn't happen.
Not happening.
Yeah, it's an open bar, we're coming, man.
Any other thoughts on ag right now?
Thank you.
And I just also want to mention, I know you just received this material today, so I'd like to revisit this at your March 18 meeting, if we can, so please take a little bit of time to digest it, and then we'll come back and just make sure that you don't have any additional questions or suggestions at the March 18 meeting. All right, we'll move on to the economy work group, and Drew's going to be the facilitator for that one.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary, Madam Chair and Commission Members. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
To go over the purpose of the Economic Development Work Group. This is to analyze reports and studies to identify the issues that influence the growth and diversification of economic activity in the county. That enhances the tax base and quality of employment and amenities for residents. Also to provide recommendations related to economic development for the Planning Commission, for this body, to consider in the development of the master plan related to land, regulations, regulatory policy, financial capital investments. So as the first meeting topic, just to start with the Planning Commission members, get your thoughts for the work group of bringing to the work group what the Planning Commission, this body, you all have previous discussions, so they can inform the work group. Also providing an overview of economic activity and resources in Carroll County, such as commercial trends, major investments, sorry, major industries, and workforce characteristics. Also to get committee members' vision for the county with key words related to land, policy, regulatory changes, and financial capital investment. And inquiring, are we missing anything? Are we missing any interests? Then diving into discussion of the economic development and land use findings. To see if committee members, do they agree with the economic development and land use study that was brought before the Board of County Commissioners about a year and three months ago? Has anything changed since that study was brought before the Board of County Commissioners? Also looking at all the different scenarios that is in the EDLU, which starts on page number 69, and the scenarios, those A, B, C, and D scenarios. And also highlighting the scenarios, the scenario, sorry, the implications for scenario C, which was from what the consultant mentioned, was that preferred scenario. Then jumping into locations, consideration for economic development opportunities. To review property analysis in the economic development and land use study, that property analysis would start on page 94. And you all probably remember, that is the section of the EDLU study that shows the 31 different properties, the, those properties which were the, that the consultant thought was the best areas for economic growth in this county. Also reviewing additional staff recommendations. So with that being said, myself and Paige Sunderland from Economic Development, we reviewed, taking into consideration other properties using GIS, and using different constraints, using different parameters with GIS, identified a couple other properties that we just wanted to also bring into the equation as well. And where should the focus of economic development generally be located in Carroll County? What areas? So for instance, north, south, just general areas. And what might some consequences of economic development be in particular locations, which I'll talk about after, or I should say, what we will talk about a little bit more after the joint meeting. But then we'll dive in with the joint meeting, as Claire mentioned, with the agriculture and housing work group. And we will talk about topics and key points of discussion related to economic development. And then we'll get back into our work group discussions, piggybacking off of that, the discussion before our joint meeting, and what public investments are needed for the desired growth scenario. So when you look at, if we want to grow this way, will we need to have increased utilities, water and sewer, transportation infrastructure? And also what regulatory and policy changes are needed to support economic development in Carroll County, and with considering factors such as market demand, land use, and others? And also what public investments, regulations, and policies are needed to mitigate unintended consequences as they relate to economic development? Unintended consequences might be, as mentioned before, increased water sewer usage, increased roadway demand. And then pulling in to, last but not least, but the preliminary recommendations. Circle back from our first meeting of, have we addressed the game changers as they relate to land, regulatory, and financial capital investments? So that's basically the overline of the meeting topics that we'll be discussing in the Economic Development Work Group. And just to get into the membership of the work group, starting with government boards and commissions. So two of the Planning Commission members of you all would be, two of you would be on Economic Development Work Group. Also with people from the Industrial Development Authority, Workforce Development Board, and two municipal representatives. Also staff from outside the Department of Planning and Land Management, from economic development, two from economic development, and one from management and budget. Also for business development, workforce development, higher education, small business, Carroll Technology Council, and the Greater Baltimore Committee. For site development, a land use attorney, site developer, like, basically a surveyor, developers that would come before you and all with a site development plan, and then a developer and real estate professional. Then for business management, a business owner, potentially local business owner, business owner or business manager, management, and also another business management, somebody from agribusiness, financial and lending sector, and then, last but not least, citizens. So either people from Finksburg, representative freedom representative, and two citizens at large. If any of you have any questions, please let me know, and thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know, I like how this is laying out so far. I think it's pretty smart. The, just another thought about ag, I mean, ag is 85% of the land in the county, so that's going to, I know a couple, I know one person that wants to be on there. So that's going to be a lion's share of a lot of work there. And this is, you know, they're all important, but the economic piece of this, and we've heard ad nauseam, commercial, commercial, industrial, and all that stuff. How do we ensure that the business management category has a commercial expert? Is that the financial institution? Is that the, I don't think it could be a singular business owner, it needs to be, you know, a higher level for commercial development. Not the building and the, you know, the X's and O's, but, you know, a visionary, or, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's, you know, somebody from the college, if it's, you know, something like that. I just think that that piece may be necessary for the economic work group.
Well, we have a few, a few buckets that somebody like that might fit into. We do have a higher education.
Yeah.
Slot there, so certainly somebody from McDaniel or the community college.
Yeah.
Would fit in there. Are you trying, are you thinking of like, like a St. John's property kind of, like, big picture thinker? Or are you thinking more?
No, that's probably not a bad idea, because they're pretty versed, and, you know, they see a lot more than just Carroll County, obviously. And they're, they're a big company, and represent a lot of, they see a lot of things. A lot of things they could probably bring to the table with, you know, with the commercial and economic development in mind.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
So the site developer, is that like surveyors?
Yeah.
That, okay.
You could take the attorney off, and put the St. John's property person. No offense.
None taken. We're a special breed.
And the real estate professional.
You know of one?
I, yeah, I do know of several.
You know a couple.
But, of course, I think probably outside of just Carroll County, I think some of the commercial ones would be good. I'm actually going to a seminar, March something, and quite a few of the bigger agencies will be there, so I can give you some names.
Excellent.
You know, Daphne, it occurs to me, and I'm, again, I'm probably wrong, but this could go a lot of different ways, and, you know, in that we have a commissioner sitting up here with us. I would love, and, no, this is kind of a Manhattan Project kind of thing, that we're asking these committees to do. Yeah, I think it would be helpful for all of us to really know what, from the top, and, you know, you, that's why you make the big bucks. No, seriously, what do we think the vision for our county is?
No, I think it's a good point.
And let's share that. I mean, because, you know, when we think, when you think about our county, we've got, I mean, we can beat ourselves up about stuff that we wish, you know, was done a different way and all this kind of, but the truth is, is we've got some tremendous assets in this county. I mean, fixed assets that aren't going anywhere. You know, from, you know, McDaniel, Stevenson's not in our county, but we've got a couple of decent institutions that we can really leverage. And, so anyway, and the investment we've made in our own school system here. So, you know, if we, if we wanted to become a Mecca for robotics, or AI, or whatever we think the next thing is, and we wanted to get in front of that, you know, then our schools need to be equipped to do that too, right? In science and math and all those kinds of things. And so, you know, where do we want to make the investment, and how do we want to make it? And then I think that helps us drive a lot of different things, you know, on the ag side and all this kind of stuff. So, you know, what is, what's our vision? I mean, you know, we know we want to be, have that small-town feel, we'd like, you know, the open space, controlled growth, you know, not too much, not too, not too little. But too, I mean, what do we want to be when we grow up? I mean, what do we want, how do we want, what do we want, what do we want it to look like? You know, I, it's, I've been thinking about this a lot, I'm actually giving a speech here in a couple of days, and one of the things I've kind of decided is, you know, the future is not a noun. When you say the future, it is a noun, but it's more of a verb, because it's what you're going to do to get there. You know, it's, you got to do something to realize your future. And so what are we going to do to make this happen? And how do we want to make it happen? So, I don't know, I'm rambling, but I've been thinking about it a lot. And it's also the case that, do y'all ever watch Hometown, the show? Well, my wife's been binging it. And last night, they were doing this thing where they descended on this town that was, I actually know the town, competed against them in Watumpka, Alabama, had nothing, Watumpka has nothing going for it, other than the fellows from there could motor, they could really run. And I competed against them in track. They totally redid their town. I mean, just totally revisioned the town. But it was, it was a community thing, it was, it was top-down, there were some great leaders, you know, in the community, and they really made something special out of a town that was going nowhere. And people had basically abandoned it years ago. I mean, it was, what? I mean, it was, which you drove around on the way to get to somewhere else. So, anyway, vision.
I don't, I don't think you're rambling. I think the question though is, you, you've said this, and I think I've said this in here previously, what do we want to be when we grow up?
Exactly.
But we're 188 years old as a county. If we're not past the infinite state, the infancy stage, where are we? I mean, we look at ag pres, it's at 80, 82, 88,000 acres.
It's mature.
That's mature program.
It is.
So my question is, we've got to stop looking at this as what do we want to be when we grow up and go, we're here now.
Right.
Where do we want to go in the next 20, 50, 75 years?
That's right.
And, and to your point about whether it's robotics or whatever, and any of those are possible. And there's been discussions in some of the municipalities, specifically Westminster, in the last five to seven years on some of these kind of topics. But it keeps bringing me back to a question, and I know we've talked about it in here before. Education, very important piece of that. But here's the other important piece. What is that company or those companies or industries going to move here for? If we don't have the amenities, if we don't have the lifestyle, the restaurants, whatever those things are, without detrimentally affecting our character that we want to keep, why would they come here?
It takes it all.
It does.
It takes, it takes, it is a heavy lift.
But we've had people propose that five or seven years ago to me in Westminster, and I said, they're not coming. And they looked at me with the blankest, whitest face possible, they just went white. And I said, why would they be here? I said, I'm not trying to be negative. I'm being a realist. Because Frederick has a highway system. We don't have that. Why would you bring a young corporation or a young industry here if you don't have the amenities?
We, we had one publicly traded company in our county, and I was talking to the CFO. And he told me, two years before, they vacated the space. Yeah, I live, I live in Northern Virginia. We are not renewing our lease.
Sure.
I mean, it just, we can't relocate him.
No.
Yeah, unless he wants to be relocated.
I mean, I think the one question everybody needs to be asking themselves, and we all know it, we just don't talk about it. Pick the two obvious things we don't have. We don't have enough venues in this community, and I mean countywide, to hold major events. Number one, Martins is now closed. Number two, we don't have good quality hotels. So when these major corporations out by the airport or wherever else want to bring people in, where do they stay? They either go to Antrim, they stay in Owens Mills, they don't stay here. That's our challenge. Because you can't, if we don't have that to build off of as the foundational base, the rest of it's never going to happen.
And that's about rooftops. Because it's, it's, you have to have a certain number of rooftops.
Oh, sure.
Before they make, you know, before, before they'll build.
No, absolutely. And I think part of it too also comes down to what is the usage of some of those hotels?
Exactly.
That we currently have. And I think that's a challenge too. So.
We solved a lot there.
We did. Move it on.
I just want to point out that we, we were driving towards those, some of that vision, trying to clarify the big ideas, when we were talking about the driving ideas. So we've got five of them, but if you take them on the whole, it's a very balanced approach to things. We want, I mean, I think you just described it. We want growth, but not too much growth. And we, and we want certain industries, but not certain other industries, that kind of thing. So I think the real challenge will be to try to crystallize a, a clear vision that pulls out those two, three things that say, this is who we want to be when we grow up. I have not heard that so far. It may, that, it may be that it comes out of this process.
And I'm exhausting my time limit, and I know that. The three minute is up, but.
Did you give your name and address?
Exactly. So, you know, part of what I like, what I think ought to come back from the, from the economic work group, is some goals on economic growth. What is, not pie in the sky, but this is what we, this is how we have grown in terms of absorption in the past. This is the number of jobs we've created in the past. We think this should be our goal. And how does planning and zoning help drive that in terms of new rooftops, you know, multifamily units? What, what, you know, Daphne, I, you know, we can, we can come up with a list, but, so define healthy growth. And I, I've shared with a couple of you, you know, I tried to come up with something, and it got to be Gordian's knot, and so I just stopped. I mean, because I was trying to, you know, a sign of healthy growth ought to be, you know, a, a lack of, to some degree, crime. Right? We don't want, whatever. Okay. Education levels, all those things, I think can impact growth. Again, it, it, like you said, or one of us, all, it's everything. It's not just one thing.
Peter, I don't want to burst your bubble here, but we can make, we can make a lot of plans for the next 10 years. And all of a sudden, here comes five or six mandates down from the state that knocks five of them of the 10 things we want to accomplish right in the head. So, you know, I think that's one of the biggest problems we face today. What's coming out of the blue that we don't know about? We don't know. We can't even begin to know. You know, the septic bill, good, bad, or ugly? The rain tax, good, bad, or ugly? You know, you look at these things and, and you can, you can, how, how can we be mandated to define affordable housing? You know? Nobody here can tell me what affordable housing is. Is it for the teacher? Is it for the steelworker? Is it for the person who just has no assets at all? Is it, so what is it? We don't know, but we're mandated to tell the state what it is, and then we're supposed to put a plan together that, that goes back and says, we're supposed, we're going to have it to affordable housing, this is what it is. You know, I'm not, I'm not throwing cold water here, I'm just saying that, you know, don't make your expectations so large that you can't even begin to get there. It, it is, the future is not the next 10 years, the future is the next, whenever the planet exists. So Carroll County has done a very good job of slow growth, and it's, and it's served us well. Without, without the major road coming through, Tom, it's still served us well. You know, we, we have given a long, hard thought to how much open space do we need? And how are we going to utilize that open space? Well, we decided to utilize it by having enough land here to make agriculture viable. Okay, so if it's viable, then does it add to the local economy? And if it does, then it's been worth the effort. So these are the things that you've got to look at. So when, when you, when we get hit upside the head with these mandates all the time that, that nobody can even define, you know, add one room here to this schoolhouse and this room here to that one, it's not getting us anywhere. So these are the things that we kind of have to keep in the back of our head when we, when we talk about these large, you know, platitudes of where we go and what are we doing, how are we growing up? We never grow up. We just grow. And we just hope we grow in a positive direction.
It's, it's, I, I, I agree with everything you said, Ralph. At the same time, I don't think that should prevent us from, from establishing benchmarks that we believe are healthy. Now, there may be something that arrives that says, well, we blew past the benchmark, or, you know, something came up and, and prevented us from achieving that.
See, Peter, the economy kind of short circuits a lot of this stuff because, or the concurrency management short circuits it.
It does.
So instead of building, you know, apartment buildings for, for people who could be affordable and all, instead, we're looking at senior housing. Because it, it bypasses some of the concurrency management.
Exactly.
So, you know, it's, it's this give and take.
It is.
And we have to leave room for a lot of this stuff. How do we leave enough room for it? And, and don't get ahead of our skis. So, and, and, you know, I go back to that, maybe, I mean, I don't look at the program you look at, but what are all the mandates on that town? Maybe they had free rein to do what they wanted to do. We don't. So, you know, I sound like an anti-government guy here, but I, I am getting a little aggravated about the mandates that we, we look at and say, who told us how to pay for all this stuff? And nobody has told us how to pay for it, they just told us we have to do it. And so there's, that's my two cents worth, which is worth not much.
No, it's worth a lot.
With inflation, it might be worth three.
Well, we don't have pennies anymore. Some guy been talking nickels and dimes now.
Shall we move on?
Yeah.
Speaking of housing, Tiffany will talk a little bit about the Housing Work Group.
Good evening. First, I'll cover the purpose of this work group, which is to review and analyze studies, reports, and research to identify the primary issues that influence the variety, availability, and affordability of housing for households of all kinds in Carroll County. The second purpose is the same as the other two work groups have as well, which is to develop land use regulatory policy and capital financial recommendations for the, for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider in the development of the Carroll County Master Plan. For the topics, we'll go through briefly what will, what we have planned for the meetings. We'll start with a welcome meeting that will include introductions. And again, as Daphne had pointed out, that there'll be an opportunity for everyone to share what they like or don't like about the housing study, something that might be missing, or something they're glad that it included. And then we'll have, we'll present to them how and where, how, where we are now, what the population is now, what the projections of the population and the household, because that's really what we're trying to address, is the growth of the community as it is seen, and then what the housing needs are projected to be in the future. And then we'll, we'll ask the, we'll review the needs and recommendations that are identified in the housing study, and those housing needs are, there are six of them. And number one is increased variety of housing types. Two is high home values, limited starter homes, and barriers to obtaining home loan, limit access to homeownership, and renting for protected classes. Number three, reduce disparities in housing access for protected classes. Number four, limited public transportation and walkability are barriers to accessing jobs and services. Five, expanding areas served by local infrastructure. And six, limited access to assistance and supportive service programs. At that first meeting, we'll also ask members to share their unconstrained ideals for each of these solutions, for each of these housing needs, and then other, other needs that aren't identified in the housing study. From those unconstrained recommendations, we will move forward and, and into the next two meetings and address those as the, the main topics being those housing needs. And we'll, in, in the second meeting and in the third meeting, we'll break it down that there'll be two of those housing needs addressed in each of those. And so with those ideal unconstrained ideals, we'll review, how do we get from where we are now to that ideal? What are the barriers between where we are now and that ideal? And then what are the opportunities that we can ha, that we have to address those barriers between here and now? And to take off that, that kind of, the, the, the blinders off of just focusing on those housing needs and the recommend, and how they want to get there, we want, we want to zoom out and take a look at the unintended consequences. How does that affect the, the existing community? How does that affect the infrastructure? We're not just keeping our blinders on, on, zooming in on that, that ideal. And we'll do that for two housing needs in the second meeting, two housing needs in the third meeting, and then that brings us to that joint meeting. And in those, those two meetings, we'll also have preliminary recommendations. We'll go into the joint meeting with, with both economic development and ag. And we'll come back in the next meeting and kind of review those preliminary recommendations we got, we had previously on those first, first four housing needs and say, is there anything we, we need to look at through a different lens now that we have these other points of view? Is there anything that we missed? Come up with that. And then we will also again, zoom out. At every meeting, we will zoom out and try to look at the unintended consequences that those recommendations could have. Then we'll go, go back into the housing needs on the next meeting, because we'll have two left that we need to, to go through. Again, it'll be, how do we get from here to the ideal? Look at the, the barriers, the opportunities, zoom out. And then we'll finally come together in the last meeting for the review and conclusion of like reviewing the, the final recommendations, is there anything that we need to tweak? And then that will open for discussion. And that's everything there, and then we'll have the report for you. Next, we'll go over the Housing Work Group, proposed participant affiliations. We have five from the Boards and Commissions, two ex officiato, and three others, two municipal representatives, and one from the local management board. And then we'll have four staff members outside of comp planning, four housing nonprofits and advocates, that include a nonprofit housing developer, focus, a nonprofit that focuses on intellectual and development disabilities, and working with people with intellectual and development disabilities, and a nonprofit group that focuses on low income, and one that focuses on aging veterans and people with disabilities. Then for other stakeholders, we're looking to have a land use attorney, residential developer, building industry representative, real estate professional, McDaniel, or somebody from McDaniel or Community College, and a financial or lending service provider. And then because the, because of, we have our growth areas, we're kind of heavy on this for the citizens' point of view in those growth areas. And that's, two from Finksburg, two from Freedom area, and then two also citizens at large, because we do want the rest of the population being represented here as well. Any questions?
I have a couple of quick questions. So when we're looking at the game changer ideas, and I know I've asked this to staff a few times, are we going to include MPDUs in this process? As you know, I keep asking about that.
I know. We know that.
I know you know that, so I keep asking.
Yes, that would, that would fit really well under some of the, some of the, let me skip back here.
Okay.
Some of the things that came out of the housing study, I think that would be like a recommendation to address some of those needs.
You've got, for one of the categories, you've got your advocates and nonprofit groups. And obviously, we touch everything from nonprofits to folks with intellectual developmental disabilities, low-income veterans, aging, and so forth. I think we're missing a fifth group.
What's that?
Where is the, I guess, what, what do they call them in the real estate group? Was it the missing middle?
Yes.
Where's the missing middle? Because that's one of the biggest groups that's getting crushed in this economy. I think they need to be included in some fashion. I mean, that's the group that's getting squeezed, whether it's buying or selling a house in this county, state, or nation. But then the other question I'll mention briefly is, I understand we've got Freedom and Finksburg, but we got four out of six citizens, they're out of the two growth areas, which I appreciate those being the growth areas, but I think we either have to add to the six, because otherwise, we're going to get a lot of feedback from just those two areas. What about Westminster? What about some of these other areas that aren't going to have a real voice at the table out of six people? I think that's a concern. Because, you know, I, I've spoken to so many people, whether they're teachers, they're firefighters, EMS, police, they're leaving Carroll County because they can't find a place to live. They're that missing middle, or better yet, they're just the average person that lives here. So if we're not going to include them in the mix, I think we're missing the boat. And I don't mean that disrespectfully, anybody putting this together, but I just think that's a huge piece of it. I mean, you look at housing prices in this county three years ago to where they are now. And I mean, those 300-some thousand dollar houses are now seven. Who's buying them? Not people in Carroll County, and I'm okay with people moving in here, but where do the rest of our people move? Or how do they stay here? Or the next generation of farmers, or whoever? I think we have to make sure we include that other big chunk that we're not, at this point, having on this list.
I mean, I'd definitely like to see somebody, obviously, we have somebody from the town of Manchester here, somebody from the Manchester-Hamstead area in there as well, obviously, because we're not only fighting, you know, our own growth, but obviously, we're fighting substantial growth in another state that happens to come through.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So.
Yeah, we can for sure add additional slots on, in any of these categories.
I just think it would be ideal, I mean, I can't tell you how many, and I know Ms. Kirchner, with all her expertise and what she does for a living, I'm sure she's heard just as many stories, whether, you know, and they're all very telling stories, whether it be teachers, fire, EMS, average people, young people trying to move here, young people trying to stay here. If we don't include them in this mix, I think we're missing the boat.
I, I think, looking at some of the counties that do incorporate those with, oh, bigger homes, more expensive homes, affordable homes in their development, we're missing out on that because I've sold lots outside of here, simply because that's what they want. They want that mix.
I'd also, again, and I've come back to it too, see, come especially out of the Housing Work Group, just the education, that the term affordable housing does not have to be something that somebody.
just the education that the term affordable housing does not have to be something that somebody fears. And I think when, especially you do get people that do buy that seven, eight, $900,000 houses, it's, you know, they're coming from these areas where they left what was affordable housing, but it's, it doesn't have the negative connotation. Like, it just means, like you said, houses that family, you know, young families can live into.
Missing middle.
Yes.
Missing middle, right.
Okay. Did we totally upset the apple cart there?
No, not at all. I mean, this is why we're, this is why we're bringing this to you, so we get that feedback. We'll kind of poke around and see. I mean, I think on the missing middle piece, I mean, there may be, particularly, I'm looking at that category for other stakeholders, where we have people who are in the building industry, developers, folks who are providing that product. That could be part of that conversation. And then like Commissioner Gordon said, trying to make sure that the, that the citizen block there is adequately populated with people who can speak to a variety of different household types and sizes and all that sort of thing. So, we'll do our best to try to make sure we've got that voice incorporated into the folks who are invited to participate.
You know, Daphne, the one that just came to mind, and I mean, we have all these stakeholders. We've got residential, we've got industrial. What about, what about rental properties? Because, you know, I know some people don't like those in Carroll County, and that's everybody's personal opinion. But, you know, you start someplace. And, you know, to me, missing middle, you want to call it stair-step housing, whatever you want to call it. You start here and you work your way up to whatever your desire is, whether it's the cul-de-sac or it's the 200-acre farm. But I think we need to include rental in there somewhere too, because that is a component.
Exactly.
In the county. And of course, you know, Westminster here, you have a lot of it that's not commercial in the sense of it being a large entity. It's people that have individually bought up individual homes and then cut them up into rental units. But I think we should include those as well.
So, are you thinking like, like the home, like you just mentioned, or like a management company?
I would probably go more with the management company, I think. I mean, nothing against the individuals that own the homes. And there's a number in the Westminster community, some own a dozen, some own more. But I think, from a larger perspective, we probably want to look at the management company and step inward. I mean, I know there's rumors and rumblings, as we all do, about various properties that may or may not become X or Y one day, but I think it'd be ideal to at least include them in the mix.
Definitely, thank you. Any other questions, thoughts on the housing work group?
Nobody.
All right, let me just give you a couple of quick next steps. As I mentioned, I'd like to come back and put this on the agenda for our March 18th meeting, just to see if you have any additional thoughts, questions, suggestions, before we start to kind of move forward with things. In the meantime, if you could just review what we've shared with you today, forward any suggested participant names you have. We've got a few folks who have, you know, gotten on our radar screen or have requested participation in one of these work groups. If you all have any recommendations, please share those with us. And then our thought is, we, we would like to try to work with the two ex officios for each of the work groups to just go through that list, just so we have kind of an outside perspective to finalize the list of invitees. Then we'll work on making that outreach and scheduling the meetings. It would be great if we can begin these in the late, late April, early May time period. But we'll see how quickly we can roll through the, getting the list of people together and getting everybody sort of on the same page in terms of who can participate and when they can start. Any questions on next steps?
All good.
All right, great. Thanks for your feedback.
Thank you. Is there any general comment? Manchester? You're welcome to talk.
You don't want to get me started.
It's okay.
Maybe we do. Exactly.
Staff, any more comments? No. Okay. Well, thank you for your presentations. They were very educational. And I'm sure we'll have some comments for you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Number nine is your favorite time of the night.
Looking at me? Dessert. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening.